Okay, good evening, everyone. Sorry about that, I was having some technical difficulties, I had to join from a different device than I expected to. I'm looking around, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
I will too. Mary Kate Murren.
Present.
Janine McDonald.
Present.
Bill Johnson.
Present.
Maurice Lindsay.
Present.
Betty Sposito. Betty's muted.
Present.
Betty, and Monique Selden Riley. Monique, you're muted, but I know you're here, so.
Okay, we're gonna start out with the presentation from Darcy Kemp, Vice President of Student Affairs, on student enrollment and retention outlook.
Thank you so much, Trustee McDonald, and good evening. As we pull up the PowerPoint here, our first slide. Nanette, could you please scroll to the next slide?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. This is something that you've seen before, a snapshot of what our daily enrollment report looks like. And I wanted to note, this is particularly for Fall 2 registration. And Fall 2 was implemented beginning in Fall 2019. So these, you know, initiatives and the collective efforts around enrolling students for Fall 2 is relatively new for us at STIC. You'll see that I did put some context in here related to Fall 2019, as well as Fall 2020. So as you read this report, on day 189 heading into last fall, we were ahead 40.3% in new students, and 91.1% in continuing compared to Fall 2019. On the same registration day this year, we're ahead 24.3% in new students, and 19.3% in continuing students in comparison to 2020. And I'd just like to note that while our enrollment strategies for Fall 2 have been successful and strong, you know, I want to note in the context of overall, you know, declining enrollment in registered credits. So we won't let our efforts, you know, wane in any way, shape, or form. We'll continue to push for enrollment and retention measures. But again, I didn't want to lose sight of the fact that this is in the context of declining, historical decline in registered credits. In the next slide, I'm gonna highlight a few key examples of the enrollment and retention strategies that we've deployed, as well as some that are planned for the upcoming Spring 22 semester. So we continue to do our targeted outreach campaigns where we engage with students who need very specific courses, and let them know that they're offered in Fall 2. So for example, at the time that we pulled the data for this report around 10:21, we had done targeted outreach for students who needed FYE, as well as criminal justice. And at that time, had got 53 students to register for a Fall 2 course. We also hosted some Fall 2 registration events, and while they weren't as significantly attended as our Fall 1 registration events, it was great to see that we had 10 new students and 10 continuing students be served and get registered for those Fall 2 classes. We continue to outreach to part-time students with 10 or less credits to encourage a Fall 2 course, and implement our weekly emails and robo calls to students with incomplete applications. For Spring 22, we will deploy similar strategies. For example, new students who were accepted in the fall but did not enroll, returning not registered students, so anyone who had been enrolled at the institution in any of the previous four semesters. Collaborations with Academic Affairs, Disability Services, our MALE Initiative for Leadership and Education, TRIO Student Support Services, and Veteran Affairs. And we also will plan for in-person and virtual registration events, just like we did for Fall and Fall 2. The last slide that I wanted to show is a highlight of the students that have submitted their documentation of COVID-19 vaccination. So we don't, priority registration advising begins this week, so we don't have any data yet on what spring advising would look like. So I wanted to note, this is the Fall 21 headcount for any students that are enrolled in a class with an in-person component, and we broke it down by division and also included workforce. Since we launched our student vaccination requirement webpage, we've received 138 uploads of documentation. So we're, you know, really encouraged by the response from the students. And you can see, as of October 21st, we had 744 students who were compliant. We are still ready to deploy our process and form for students seeking requests for medical and religious accommodations. So we anticipate that our strategy will continue as far as high-level, high-touch engagement and outreach with students to communicate effectively with them about what to expect for spring semester and what options are available to them. We also opened priority registration November 16th. That's for students who are currently enrolled in courses. And then on November 19th is when we open course registration for all other students. And I wanted to note, in addition to advisors receiving information about how to have conversations with students, we'll also be hosting some Zoom and in-person sessions with advisors during priority registration so that students can either meet with someone on campus or in person if they have any questions or concerns. Are there any questions?
Bill Johnson. Not getting into the merits, one way or the other, of being vaccinated or not vaccinated, how many students do you feel you're gonna lose because of the mandate? Or you don't have, you can't put your arms around that yet?
We haven't opened spring semester course registration yet, Trustee Johnson, but I'm encouraged by the students' response so far. I think 138 uploads, and then students inquiring about the next step or the process of requesting accommodations, you know, will be another key indicator for us. But, you know, I jokingly say, we all work to deadline, and so do students, right? So we do anticipate that as we approach the spring semester, we're going to see more movement in whether the students are seeking an accommodation, choosing to be fully online for their classes, or uploading their vaccination documentation.
Okay, so there is an option for them to be fully online, or they're not vaccinated, but what if they have to do labs and stuff like that, that's still online, or?
Yes, what we're doing is, when we are opening our registration, we are not restricting access to any coursework for students. What we're doing is allowing students to choose the courses and the modality that they're interested in, and we're working with them on either the vaccination upload or their request for an accommodation. Certainly, if a student falls outside of that and is interested in being in an on-campus course or that they're impacted in a way where they have a, maybe an online course, but the lab is in-person, we're gonna do case by case and work with the students individually to figure out the best plan and course of action for them. And, you know, a few of the conversations that I've already had with students is really just taking a look with their advisors, seeing what coursework is available to them in spring semester if they choose to be fully online, and that one might be available further down the road for them to register for. So it is a little bit of a waiting game, but again, I'm encouraged by the work that we've done today and the student responsiveness to our communication and engagement efforts.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Selden Riley, you have a question? Have your hand raised?
Hi, yes. Um, I just want to know, are there any incentives being offered to students for getting their vaccination information in a timely fashion?
I was looking for, we had this thing where we're trying to see who went off mute, so I can see how our leadership team might wanna respond. Great question, right now, to my knowledge, we don't have incentives for the upload. We'll definitely take that under advisement. We definitely did do incentives related to encouragement of vaccine when we were in that stance, if you will, ahead of fall semester. But we'll look and see what are our possibilities, what are our options with this upload piece, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, my question was similar to Trustee Johnson's question. And so the F, the Fall 21 headcount, right, like when I reviewed this in preparation for the meeting, I did have some concerns about like the 12 and the 15%. And so, you know, what does that mean? How does that translate into enrollment, like Trustee Johnson said? Are these also, I know like STEM, is it because maybe these are students who may be more likely or can opt to do online because of the coursework? Like, can you just help put these numbers into a bit more perspective for me? Because that 12 and 15, I mean, all the others outside of 80 are very concerning, and all I could think about is how this is going to impact enrollment.
Yeah, let me, let me try to help, and then let me, let me point to Darcy, who will, who will help ensure that I'm accurate. What's helpful about this, trustees, is that 80% mark that you see shows what requirement generates. By and large, the majority of those students in that school of health, because of their clinical placements, they were required to already get vaccinated, that's why the rate is so high. All those other rates, there was no requirement, there was no mandate underneath that. What we wanted to show you is the head start actually that we have. This is actually encouraging that we even have these other percentages in other areas to show you, we're not starting from scratch. Trustee Johnson asked a great question. It's been really difficult to forecast what this impact is, and obviously trying to marry that to the health and safety obligation we have for our campus community. That's been a real tough balance. Obviously, the 15 community colleges went together on this requirement for students and employees. What it seems likely is that, in the budget anyway, we projected to be down 5% in the spring because that budget was, was developed before the Delta variant and before some of these things. So it seems optimistic that we would only be down 5% year-over-year in spring enrollment. We just don't know how far beyond that we might be. And again, it's gonna be hard to somehow create cause between a vaccine mandate and that enrollment, or some of these other factors in people's lives. It'll be hard to say it's because of this that enrollment is down. Obviously, a mandate doesn't necessarily help, but it's part of that trade-off to help ensure that campus safety piece. So again, the 80% shows you where we can get with the requirement piece, and we're not sure exactly where we'll get ultimately with enrollment. Darcy, how was that?
It was spot on.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, it is a concern because I understand the requirement for employees, right? And I think that's a bit of a different, you know, stake that someone has when it's attached to their immediate livelihood and how they've been earning their money. Unfortunately, you know, with education, sometimes it can be viewed more as an optional thing. And, you know, I'm just, you know, concerned about students who will just opt not to because, and they say, oh, well, you know, maybe I don't need to finish that coursework, or maybe I don't need to continue my education. But to the student trustee's point, I think we should think about some creative ways in which we can encourage the students to meet their requirement within a deadline.
Yeah, and we can certainly continue with the board come January, and then at the February Ways It Means To Show, what are all the ways we've been messaging this vaccine piece? First, from the encouragement standpoint, and I'm gonna talk in my remarks about the event that we hosted on campus on Saturday, all the way to be very clear about the requirement piece because we really have transitioned from more of the carrot model to now the stick model. And again, forgive the analogy there, but we really have pushed on this mandate aspect of it. We know UMass did this prior to fall semester, we know the state universities did this prior to fall semester, and each of them have in turn have seen some slight dips in their own enrollment, and they have residential elements to contend with that are slightly different then.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Darcy. We're gonna move on to Dr. DeBurley's presentation on academic affairs outlook opportunities.
So I'm just bringing, I'm going to just bring you up to date very quickly on the two large grants that we just received, which began on October, the 1st of October. There are two separate HSI STEM grants that we received. The first one for Title V, both of them are over five years. The first one, Title V, for $3 million, and the other one is also entitled HSI STEM, but a slightly different funding. Both are federal for $4.3 million. And together, the two grants have much in common in the sense that goals are looking at retention and improved graduation rates for our STEM students, increasing the number of Hispanic and low-income students in the STEM majors. We are, of course, gonna leverage the funds to be able to provide and hire high-touch staffing, as given an example, advisors, coaches, financial literacy consultants, tutoring. It also will support our supplemental instruction. Supplemental instructors are students who have taken courses in, in general, in sort of high-risk and high-enrollment areas, but also in some of our lower enrollment STEM courses. And they basically sit in on the courses, and then they form sort of study groups where students can then come and work with the supplemental instructor to get additional assistance. But because that individual and these, the supplementary instructor, the supplemental instructors are called SIs, is the acronym, SIs, have sat in on the course and are also working with the faculty member, not in teaching the course, but providing some additional sort of guidance and support. The evidence has shown us over the last few years when we had this in Title III, that that has made a difference in the students' GPA. So we really want to continue that, and this funding has enabled us, has enabled, will enable us to continue to do that, to the tune of some probably over, with the both, both of the grants, something like 135 SI leaders over the next five years. This also supports tutoring. The other piece that is important is looking at our math pathways. You're going to hear from Dr. Vanessa Hill, and just after, I think myself, to talk about the development of that, and looking at, many of our students who are coming to our campus are underprepared in the math areas. And part of the issue is, and part of the concern is, that they take what we have been calling developmental math courses, and then they sort of languish there in the math courses, and don't continue on. So we're looking at different models, that students are able to get this necessary skill sets that they need in math, but at the same time can also move through their academic pathways, rather than get discouraged and, and basically disappear. Many of the students who are placed in these lower-level math courses don't continue on. So we're really looking at other ways to encourage those students to continue. There's also funding for professional development for our STEM faculty, which again, is looking at the equity agenda, and noted there with gender bias, diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we're really very thrilled about the ability to be able to have all of the support. In addition to the SIs, which I gave details on, we have the ability to hire two full-time STEM advisors, of course, project directors and activities directors for it, and additionally, part-time STEM coaches, data analysts, a research fellow that can also help to look and see, actually in a sense of how we measure and quantify. Again, these are federal grants, we need to do a lot of reporting as to where, how, how that needle is being moved forward, but that'll help us internally in our own assessment processes. So that's a very quick sort of summary of what we're hoping with, with this considerable amount of funding over the next five years. Any questions about that?
Hi, this is Betty. Dr. DeBurley, I just have a quick question on this, and, you know, it's all through the news about hiring, and, you know, openings in many, many areas. How do you feel that we're going to be able to fill these high-touch staffing areas with the grant, you know, the supplemental instruction and that? Are there people coming knocking at the door that say, "I'm looking, I'd like a job"?
Well, these positions are all posted, so if you look on our website, you'll see all of these posted positions there.
Okay.
The, I can't quite answer the question as to how, how it's going on those postings. We just posted them in the last couple of weeks. The supplemental instruction is separate because those are students.
Right.
That we identify, so in a sense, that's more on the peer basis. And, and we work with faculty, faculty help us to identify students that would be good supplemental instructors, and we tend to have them for about a year or two. And they go through intensive training to be able to provide the support that they need to for our, for other students taking the courses. Insofar as, you're, you're quite right, there is a lot going on vis-à-vis the hiring of supports because a lot of institutions, all institutions have received considerable funding in other, in other areas, not necessarily in these types of STEM grants. They have received from the state something we call success funds. What I'm hopeful at is that because these fund, these, this is what I call soft money, right? It's grant-funded, so it's soft money. However, it's soft money for five years, as opposed to the more, sort of, the quicker and faster and large, large sums of money that we've been given sometimes to the state or the feds, have sort of only a year to sort of spend that money, and maybe a year of no-cost extension. That doesn't allow us for the proper planning and the phasing in. And whereas with these five-year grants, we really have time to phase them in properly. In addition, we've, we've had, we just closed out on our Title III grant that gave us some $3 million over the five years. So we've learned a lot about the implementation and the measuring, and as to what works. We know supplemental instruction works, we know the models that have been set up here work well. So in that sense, there is the sustainability of it. There is sustainability with federal funds, but that's, that's something that we can continue to do, and our grant writers have been very successful in helping us to secure those grants. Does that help?
Thank you.
Monique, do you have a question? So you have your hand up.
No, I'm sorry, let me take that down.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to the Innovation Fellowship update from Dr. Vanessa Hill.
Good evening, everyone. So I am, I am Dr. Vanessa Hill, and I'm here to update you on the Innovation Fellowship for the developmental math sequence. You can go to the next slide. So first of all, I want to talk a little bit about background. We know that STIC is approximately 52% students of color, but they persist at a 13% lower rate and graduate at a 17% lower rate than their white counterparts. 82% of our students of color test into developmental, and 60% for white students. And that data was taken pre-COVID and the pre-GPA placement data, but I think it's still along the same lines, I just wasn't able to pull the most recent years for that. A student will graduate in that three years at a 39% rate if they are college-ready, which means they have no developmental placements. If they have some minimal placement, it's a 15%, but if they have max developmental placements, which means they place into the lowest level of both reading, writing, and math, they only have a 3% chance of actually graduating. We currently have a three-semester developmental math sequence with up to 10 credits. So let's say a student places into the lowest level and they wanna go into STEM, they would take two, three-credit semester courses, and then they would move into a four-credit course for their last semester developmental, which is a pre-STEM Algebra II course that really is trying to help get them prepared. So if they're placing into these courses, a lot of times, they can't take anything in their major until over two years after they've actually joined the college, which is a huge problem because our students aren't getting through. Next slide. So I was tasked with these four major things with the Innovation Fellowship. The first one is to develop a one-semester, four-credit maximum modular course. And the reason that this is really important, I know that there's a trend of getting rid of all developmental, but a lot of our students come in, they're older, or they haven't had the math in high school that they really need to be successful, and they need a refresher on basic arithmetic and algebraic concepts. And those going into STEM may not have been really exposed to some of the higher-level concepts in trigonometry and exponential logarithmic functions. So we want to expose them to that, so when they do get into their college-level course, they've already seen it, and then they're more prepared for it. The second thing I'm tasked with is to look at data on our placement exams. Once we went out for COVID, we were not able to administer Accuplacer anymore, so we have our own placement exams, but I'm looking at data both pre-COVID and during COVID, looking at placements, how students did in their developmental course if they had to take developmental, as well as if they went right into college level. And then also, I wanna look at subsequent courses. So maybe they did well in their developmental, but did it really prepare them when they got to their college-level courses? The next thing is to help establish appropriate mathematical concepts for their college-level courses and programs. So each module that we develop will be a prereq for either a math course, or, you know, it could be a chemistry course or biology course. And we have to make sure that those skills that were prereqs, like maybe in Algebra I or Algebra II, the modules align so that they are still being prepared for their college-level course that they can be successful. Some students may only have to take one credit. Maybe they, our first module, we know is gonna be like a pre-stats module. So if they are general studies and they need statistics or liberal arts math, they'll only have to take that one module, and then they can go out of the system. If they change their mind later and they wanna go into a STEM-related course, they can come back at another time and be able to take more modules so they can be prepared for their college level. But this is designed to be a one-semester course. And then lastly, to build some deeper relationships with Springfield area math faculty. And in particular, I've been in contact with the High School of Commerce in Kylie Prep, just to build those kind of connections and let them know what's expected when the students get to us, and help inform especially the pedagogy for, for the juniors and seniors so that we are making sure that when they get there, they can be college-ready. Next slide. So what has occurred so far? I started off in the summer, I started this in July, and I did a lot of research. And it's all about best practices, because whatever we incorporate, we wanna make sure that the research supports whatever methods we're employing. So I did a extensive literature review, which is ongoing, because I still get articles sent to me, and I'm still researching things that are out there. I also read redesigning America's community colleges. And a lot of what was in that book is, really relates to the math pathways that have been shown that if you have a student in a pathway as early as possible, then they're much more likely to be successful and graduate. I looked at community colleges, both in and out of state. In particular, I've worked a lot with Massa Sawyer N-State, who did a redesign gateway in Connecticut. I even have been in contact with a community college in Oregon that's a technical community college, and they had gotten a huge NSF grant to do a redesign. So they sent me some curriculum that they've been using. And I'm still trying to connect with Manchester Community College, who did the one semester for credit redesign. So I'm hoping to be able to take a closer look at their curriculum. Engaging, outside of engaging the community colleges, I also surveyed all of our faculty on campus, and I asked them to identify the key math concepts that are important for their discipline to help inform both what we're going to incorporate into this course, as well as which module it should fall into. Again, initial contact with the schools, I have standing meetings with the president, I've met with the Vice President, Dr. DeBurley, as well as some of the other VPs, and meetings with deans, faculty departments, whoever wants to talk to me. We have to make sure that there's, there's wide, broad campus buy-in for this, and, and we want this to be a meaningful change, and so it can't happen in a vacuum. We're really trying to get away from that silo method that we sometimes have. And then my last slide. So I continue to. So I continue to meet with campus community and stakeholders, anywhere from um, you know, student support services to um, financial aid. We just have to see how all this is gonna play together. And then I met Matt, which I'll continue to meet with him about how this can be incorporated. Um, identifying those key concepts and learning outcomes. I have a committee of both full-time and part-time faculty in the math department. Who, we started building this out and it's a great committee and we've, we've gotten already a lot of really good work done. Of course, I'm gonna need to build this course out. So we're getting all the curriculum and finalizing it. I'll meet with different departments to make sure that those link up properly to the pathways and prereqs. And then, you know, we have to build out this whole course. Um, we're identifying the software to be employed because it's gonna be really important to have a really solid software package. Because some students will come in and test into the first module and some will be in the second. Some will be in the third. So we really have to make sure it's a solid package that um, students are getting all the support they need. And they'll still have that faculty and we'll have SIs incorporated into it. Um, addressing facility and technology needs, we have to make sure that our students have access still to computers and hotspots. And the classroom design, it needs to be configured differently. It can't be really a traditional classroom because we're gonna need to separate students into pods and have ones who are working on the same module together as opposed to a faculty just lecturing to the whole class. So I'm working with um, facilities on that. We started those conversations. We'll need to get this to the curriculum committee for the spring so that it can go live in the fall. Um, and then in the summer, we will be creating um, guided notebooks to go with all the different modules and coordinating videos and then training the faculty on both the, the new course that's gonna be run as well as making sure they're really com- comfortable with the software package and the technology that will be used to employ for this course. So that is all I have. Is there any questions?
Um, I have a question. Um, I want to say, I think it's awesome that we are, you are, um, when you're building this out, reaching back farther than commerce and going into Kylie Prep. I think that's really important. Um, has there been any thought or consideration around reaching into um, the instructors for the ABE program? Because I remember during my time in that world, that one of the things that we would see is that our students would score twelve plus on their high set, but then when they got into the college setting, they would struggle um, with their college-level math. And so when you brought up that point, um, it made me think of, of ABE.
So I've met with them as a whole department and we're planning on meeting again. But yes, I met with them, um, at the very beginning of the semester, um, I went to their department meeting and it was a really fruitful conversation. Um, and they were excited to work with me. And as we form the, the um, curriculum, then I will be meeting with them again as a department. So yeah, absolutely.
Great, great. Any other questions or comments?
It's Betty. I just have a, a quick one and I, I don't know if there is an answer. But for the, I hate to use the word average, but someone coming in as a freshman and it's identified that there's a weakness in the math area. How, about how much does this extend their education process? We talking a semester? Or is it gonna come down to one course? Is that, is that what I'm getting?
So the goal is um, no more than one semester, but it doesn't have to last the whole semester. So, so the student that I was saying, maybe they need um, just a pre-stat course. They can come and take that first module. Once they pass that module, and let's say they pass it in, excuse me, at the beginning of the fall semester, they can actually register for Fall Two class and be done with their college-level math in the first semester, even though they had to do some remediation before they got there.
Beautiful.
So it does not, it does not have to last the whole semester. If they need it then, of course, we're gonna support them through that. But um, it's the, the, what we're looking at, especially the software package, we're looking at diagnostic packages that really get to, these are your areas of weaknesses. So that not everybody, even in the same module, is gonna be doing all the same homework problems. Right? We're gonna, it's gonna be individualized. So they're getting that support in time that they need so they can move through as quickly as possible.
Beautiful. Great.
I have a question. Uh, I'm just curious, uh, Dexter Hill, how receptive when you talk to the folks at the high school, uh, particularly to make sure that the seniors that are coming our way are prepared regarding the math level that we're looking for, that we're talking about. How is, how are those conversations going?
So they, very well, actually. They would like to use, um, especially over commerce. Um, I met with the math teacher starting in the summer and we've met again this fall. And because there's so much more flexibility after the MCAS, they're very interested in taking the curriculum that we develop and employing it in the school to help them to make sure that they're um, getting the remediation they need, if that's what they need. And really trying to get them geared up so that they are successful when they come over and that they go right into college level. So they actually want to use the correction, curriculum that we're developing.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
This is Bill Johnson. I apologize, I'm on a phone tonight, not on Zoom, but I have, uh, it's a two-part question, I guess. Or the math skill issue, is that a recent phenomenon? Or is that something that's been going on since, uh, you know, community colleges have started that? Or is this something that's just really serviced the last five, ten years with, with, with the, the, the kids that are signing up, not, not meeting the uh, the minimum requirements for the college courses? And then my second part is, it sounds like you've reached out to commerce. Have you identified like the top five uh, high schools that send kids our way and try to reach out to them to, to implement the same type of program? Were they doing with commerce? Or you're trying to use commerce as like a, a the, the ground zero, then see how it works out, then move on to some other high schools?
So I've been getting contact information from Pam Westmoreland, who works with a lot of high schools. And um, we're trying to branch off more than commerce. Commerce is just a really good tie-in because they're right here. Um, and yes, there, we do have the data. I didn't compile it, but there is the data of which schools that um, our students are actually coming from. So for that part, we do have that. And I will be reaching out to more schools than just commerce. It was just a nice way to um, start that initial conversation. And I will be offering um, the curriculum and what we're doing to anybody who's available and who's interested in it. Um, so that part, um, I think is, is doable. I, it's, some schools are more receptive than others, but um, it, it's not gonna be just the one school. So I'm, I'm offering this to anybody who wants to work with me. And then for your question about the students unprepared for math, it's been happening for years and years and years that students come in and they are not prepared. I think in a way it's getting worse with the standardized test over the last decade or so. There's a lot of, there's a lot of material, but it's very shallow and it, teachers aren't able to get in-depth with it because they're forced to teach such a breadth of, of different ideas and concepts. So I in no way blame it on the teachers. I just think that, that standardized testing and, and how much we, we test these kids and they don't have a chance to sit and just kind of develop a number sense. That when I was young, when I went to school, we didn't learn all this stuff, but we learned it deeply. And then when we saw a new concept, we were able to adapt to it. And that hasn't been the case. So um, I think it's getting worse, but math has just traditionally been an, an area that kind of keeps people out of things, right? It's been a gateway that um, hasn't been very receptive and especially to people of color. So um, it, it's something that needs to be addressed, but it, it's not.
Yeah, no, I, I, I've been, I, I've been against the MCAS since it came out. You know, life is not about one test. You know, and, and I, anyway, that's a whole nother conversation. But uh, thank you. Sounds like you're very, you're doing a very good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'm sorry I sound like this, I have fall allergies. I was trying to drink tea, but I, you know, it is what it is.
So funny to me.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Hill. We are now going to move on to a presentation from Professor Atwater with the All-Unit Congress.
Thank you for having me this evening. And as members of the AIA, I'd first like to use my voice to lift up the Native American members of our campus community. And on this first day of National Native American Heritage Month, to make a acknowledgement that the land upon which STIC stands is first indigenous land known to the original Agonquin inhabitants as Agawam. And since it's our first time meeting, I'd like to tell you a little bit about me. As the AUC faculty co-chairperson, I began at STIC in two thousand fourteen. I'm a business professor, teaching courses in management, org behavior, business ethics and leadership. And I've also been a lead for many projects on campus, like the Fast Tracks Program, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, the First Year Experience Course Development, and the NECHI Ten-Year Self-Study. Last year as co-chair. I've also become a recent avid viewer of Board of Trustees meetings, sometimes even binge-watching them. And I hope today to respond to some of the questions I've heard, asked about the current structure of the AUC, which is the largest body in the shared governance mechanism of STCC and a point of the response from uh, NECHI in their recent response letter. I also hope just to share a brief history of the, of the history of the AUC and then respond to one part of the NECHI letter from the visiting team. So the next slide, please, Nanette. Shared governance issues are not new to STCC. In our last ten-year accreditation by NEASK, now NECHI in two thousand eleven, they named shared governance as one of the areas of emphasis. And following this, uh, open forums were held on campus and a new system of shared governance was created. It was voted on by almost two hundred campus constituents and then ultimately put into place, approved by then-President Ruben Zoll and placed in the interim report to NEASK. Of note, in that letter from the Restructuring Committee is that a distinguishing feature of the AUC, this new government structure, would be a formal relationship with the Board of Trustees so that the employees represented by the body have a channel to communicate directly with the leadership of the college. NEASK's response to the college was that STIC should assure the effectiveness of internal governance, particularly in the area of financial planning and decision-making and including the communication and participation of all constituencies. So the timeline kind of gives you a brief update of that. Next slide, Nanette, please. Uh, this slide shows what was born from that AUC structure. So this is um, what the internal, the AUC gear as part of the shared governance mechanism on campus looks like. You can see that there are two co-chairs, one from faculty and one from staff. And first, there were three standing committees and later the Curriculum Committee was added. So the Academic Standing Committee has a charge of covering all academic policies. The Staff Standing Committee covers all non-academic policies. Safety and Facilities assures the safety and efficiency of the college campus. And then the Curriculum Committee dealing with all matters related to curriculum. We also currently have an ad hoc committee for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this committee is focused on studying how the AUC shared governance can assist the Anti-Racist and Inclusion Alliance in moving STIC towards becoming an anti-racist institution. So I guess the question to ask here is, is the AUC working effectively? And I would suggest right now that it's not, that it's not because the mechanism of shared governance in total at the college al- only allows the AUC to be a reactionary body and not to participate fully in the process or communications that would support true shared governance. And so because of that, we do have a lack of participation in some of the committees. Because I think members feel like over a certain time period, their voice has become ineffective or um, or ignored. The next slide, please. This slide is just meant to underscore the structure of the AUC, and I'm sharing four other models from community colleges in New England. The two in the center, Cape Cod and Manchester, we use those as part of our self-study as kind of models of the self-study. And then Holyoke Community College on the left is our nearest institution. And Capital Community Colleges in Hartford, Connecticut. And of note is that this is, Capital Community College is a, another model that was considered back in two thousand twelve and voted upon um, regarding the inception of the current AUC. So even though the names are changed, you can see that the structure of our All-Unit Congress is similar to the structure of these other colleges, uh, including the alignment of those highlighted in yellow, then blue, green, and purple. And then ultimately the ad hoc committee in red for DEI. Uh, the next slide, please. And so recently you read in the um, in the NECHI response from the visiting committee that they described the AUC as an ad hoc self-styled advocacy group. And I would agree with this statement. And to me, this is a process statement. I don't believe that this necessarily discounts this current structure of the AUC. But instead, it speaks to the way in which the AUC has had to deal with decision-making at STIC. Um, I'm highlighting here in yellow some of the changes, not all the changes, but some of the changes that have taken place at STCC since two thousand sixteen, which is the time of the last interim report to NECHI. And each of these, maybe communication was done to the union under the, the legal structure of that contract. But no entity on campus was really brought in as part of the process by which these decisions were made. So you may ask, why would it be important that the AUC be a part of these decisions? And first, I'd like to make a distinction that it's not about the AUC making decisions. We know that is not in our purview. But instead, it's about being a part, a process, a part of the process, or advising the decision-making process. Also, we have some supporting, um, some other entities that support this, which include NECHI, obviously in standard three. Section two that talks about the institution's system of governance involving all appropriate constituencies. And then the MCCC in their um, contract in four A dot O one emphasizes that advisory organizations exist within the community college and that they should provide for an open forum of discussion and information sharing for the purpose of providing the president of the college with advisory input prior to the promulgation of decisions. I noted here that even in um, his own self-assessment in two thousand nine, two thousand nineteen, Dr. Cook detailed the need to develop and continue to strengthen communication with the college's shared governance body, along with formalizing communication. And then also NECHI almost diagnoses the issue of ad hoc self-styled advocacy by stating that we don't have any documented or identifiable internal governance framework. So I think that when we, when, when you see the changes that were made here, the multiple changes that include um, s- school reorganizations, program suspensions, and only having the opportunity to respond to these explains the frustration and the way that we asserted our position to the visiting team, which may have led them to feel that the AUC was considered an ad hoc self-styled advocacy group. Next slide, please. We as the AUC know that we have onus as it relates to improvement here. So since reading the self-study, we've made some adjustments to how the AUC gear as part of the shared mechanism operates. We've begun to invite administration to present at shared governance meetings and to begin conversations that surround budgetary concern, human resource issues, resource allocation issues. Also, we've begun to study our committees on campus to ensure that the committees align with shared governance and are not just utilizing a representation model. And we're beginning to organize meetings among the different shared governance entities on campus, the MCCC and ASME to more further just define how each of our roles um, works and then to ultimately add administration to those conversations. And tonight I'm here just to express our willingness from the AUC to build the trust and ultimately the participation of the AUC in the decision-making process. In slide seven, the next slide, I previous, I, I had spoke about other shared governance entities and how they define shared governance. But this is a, um, a text that I recently received from our library um, about shared governance. And it's a compilation of insights and essays on shared governance. And Stephen Ball emphasizes a couple of things, but mostly the need to work deliberately between the three units, faculty, members, trustees, and administrators to build trust, transparency, and open and respectful three-way communication. All things I'm committed to doing as the uh, co-chair of the AUC. He also speaks about developing joint commitment, shared metrics, in a way in which the institution can remain focused. So finally, slide eight, please. You can see in this image that the gears here are not matched and therefore the teeth don't assist to turn the mechanism of shared governance. So I'm excited about the opportunity to work together with the Board of Trustees and the Board of Trustees Internal/External Committee to align those mechanisms together to improve shared governance and the, and the overall mechanism to include the voice of all constituents on campus in a proactive way which can be productive and ultimately lead to higher-quality decision-making. which can be productive and ultimately lead to higher quality decision-making. And we really look forward to become a part of the conversation in a way that is impactful. Again, at the beginning of the process, rather than after decisions are made, after consultants are chosen, or after a path has been forged, because the AUC views this as a shared responsibility. So if you have any questions for me?
Um, so for clarification, the AUC um, was birthed out of the collective groups coming together, and then was implemented by a previous president, correct?
That's, yes, that's the case.
Okay. Um, and so it's also, to my understanding, that the AUC does not necessarily meet the requirement for shared governance? Or is it that it's also because it's not a body that the board has voted on and approved?
So I don't.
Governance model.
Excuse me. Um, so I don't have the minutes from past board meetings, but I know that this was presented, I found um, a board, I found minutes that were presented to the board by President Rubensall speaking of this, of the AUC when it was first incepted. So I know that, along with that, as well as the um, interim letter that was sent to NEASK, that would have been shared with the board, so I'm, I'm certain that the board was aware at the time. I'm not sure that any piece of the entire shared governance mechanism was ever, was ever um, determined. But the structure of the internal governance, which includes, which is the AUC, that piece was codified under the AUC bylaws at that time.
Okay, because I think that's the part um, that is concerning for me. Like, one, when you couple, and I understand everything that you're saying about, you know, whatever the determining factors are behind the committees not being operative, um, or, you know, whatever people's motivation or lack there is of in participating. But the other concern with me is, one, how has NACI determined um, you know, AUC? And how does that play into the shared governance? Two, was this ever voted on and officially adopted by the Board of Trustees? Three, we, um, you know, and if it's nowhere, you know, recorded, and considering that we're under a new president, I think that, and I know this is a conversation that needs to be had, because it is attached to the accreditation. Um, you know, I'm kind of thinking that it sounds like the board needs to examine what the actual body of shared governance will be, and then what we are going to adopt and actually vote on it. And, you know, maybe that's AUC, maybe it's a separate body, maybe it's a different body that AUC has a chair on. I know one of the other things that's lacking is, um, I spoke to other community colleges um, through my networking with ACCT, and we are also missing, like, that student component to shared governance, and I think that's something that's really important as well. But I'm going to stop there and open it up for other questions or comments from my fellow trustees.
Yeah, I, I think, Chris, that was my comment, you know? Though I agree with Stephen Ball's shared governance and kind of the wheels is, where, where do the students fit into your structure? You know, in your, with the current structure, I didn't see any students. So I guess it's a question of where are they um, in the processing and the come on, the conversations that you all are having um, when there's, when something comes up?
So I would say that first, students are represented in the shared governance mechanism by having a student trustee on the Board of Trustees first. And then also um, we do, so the, the bylaws of the AUC allow for a member of the student government to be a part of the um, or to be a, kind of a, a visitor of the AUC committees. And we've had the AUC General Assembly, we've had students before, especially as, as um, providing presentations. Uh, but yes, I do believe that's an area that we need to improve, is the student voice as part of the internal shared governance mechanism.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I was going to just jump in for context, and Chris, I appreciate the walkthrough. I, I don't know that I've seen something as comprehensive as that in my five-plus years at the college, and as opposed to speaking for the All-Unit Congress, I'm grateful for how you mapped that out, including the history piece. It is worth, I think, to invite our trustees to look at the bylaws, and in particular, this first promulgation, just so you can see the spirit, I think, at least, in which it was created, and that there was specific mention of the president and trustees. I say that because the backstop on all this is the NACI standards of accreditation. And they do say the Board of Trustees are the policy body. And if policy will be delegated in a different fashion, US trustees will want to approve that. I also like Chris's outlook on ad hocness. In some ways, that is our inheritance. There was nothing written down. We didn't have an academic plan, campus master plan, an IT plan, a facilities plan, program review, right? We didn't have planning codified and formalized. I think trustees, you can help all of us at the, at the institution do that, especially because within those NACI standards is specific mention of the role of the president and the role of a chief academic officer. Those are the types of things we also need to see acknowledged in whatever you all land at. Including, for example, that trustees have already, per year policy, delegated all personnel to the president. That means management of collective bargaining agreements. There are a number of things that touch on those from a policy standpoint. How does a faculty member get tenure? That's a policy action that has already been bargained and lives in the MCCC contract. So there are elements in there to sort of get our hands around, not just uh, and, or I should say, in addition to some of the other comments that we've heard, including the, the student piece, where they are explicitly codified, not just as a student trustee too.
Um, thank you for providing that context. I think that was some of what I was um, you know, concerned about, and I wanted to make sure that, one, we're operating, you know, within um, the NACI standards. Um, and I think, you know, digging into the bylaws is going to be really important in informing our decision as well, especially when we talk about policy and the role that the board plays um, in that. Are there any other questions or comments?
Hi, it's Betty. I was just looking across the um, models from other community colleges, and I guess my question is, um, everybody calls every, everything a little different. I mean, we have a couple that are college senates, but I'd love to see what lies under that as to where, kind of like their um, what are their policies, procedures, their guidelines, um, like over, um, and we don't have Berkshire Community up here, BCC, um. And I would just wonder what they're doing there up the road, um. And to see the student rep involvement, but um, like, by the name, what does it mean? You know, and different things underneath each one, too. So I'm sure there's going to be more, more forthcoming.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions? All right. Moving on to the president's perspective.
Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for the time. Um, just a few notes uh, through the agenda, just to put a fine point on, I think, a few things, and then you'll see through items I just want to be sure to touch base on. So first of all, our presentation from our VP of Students. Um, just want this committee in particular to know how we are trying to turn over every stone when it comes to enrollment. So this notion of fall, too. Uh, prior to 2019, there wasn't a late start, if you will. If you didn't join the college in the fall, starting, let's say, right after Labor Day weekend, there was another, another, not another onboarding point until January. Honestly, from an enrollment standpoint, we were missing out a little bit on, on another on-ramp. So it's really helpful to have that quote "fall" to, that October start for some students. And it, and it really has been helpful to us, even amidst the backdrop of the overall enrollment decline. You also see through all these, including the presentation from our Vice President of Academic Affairs, this idea of tailored, individualized, uh, um, Professor Hill also touched on this. That really is the signature piece of higher education retention in this day and age, and it is empirically based. The more individualized you can be with students, the greater likelihood you will to retain them. And you see that baked into all of these initiatives, whether it's that MALE Initiative for Leadership in Education Trio, veterans, the multitude of connection points. This is really that new model that we are trying to build out in the name of our student engagement piece, and it's great to see. And it's nice to have federal funding, frankly, to help, because that really is getting us some of the staffing that we otherwise would not be able to afford. And I think, again, that's a key point to share with all of you. Um, again, thrilled at the work that our Innovation Fellow, uh, Dr. Hill has, has tackled. Wonderful to hear the kind of questions that you have. And again, you're, you're going to see, um, we really are going to finally get the type of reform that we need. When other students contend with 10 credits potentially, now at the maximum, they will have is four. It's going to change their persistence with us. And honestly, data shows they didn't need all 10 of those credits beforehand anyway. So again, really thrilled with the progress we're making there. Um, and by the way, side note, this is part of the uh, the benefit of being that Assistant to the President. Dr. Hill has now learned, what's the life of an administrator? Meetings, meetings, meetings. She's seen where a lot of that work gets done and, and what we do with our time all the time. So I, good to see her smiling and laughing about that. But yes, welcome to the world of administration. So to the three items here, real brief, you'll see trustees, um, the personnel information. Again, I'll just go through and, and, and point out a few things, because you have the new hires, those separating, those retiring, full and part-time. We did hire for that Director of the MALE Initiative for Leadership in Education, Myle Miguel Maria, comes to us from Westfield State, had been there a number of years, worked his way up. Uh, also spent time in financial aid, a pretty critical point of conversation for a lot of our students, um, is in a doctoral program. So to the question from Trustee Lexax Pacito, we do like our chances with sourcing talent. That's a really good example of what came through. I think we had over 40 applications for that position. So we are seeing some strong pools developed for some of these. Um, on the personnel front, we have uh, return to form. Human Resources is now sending out a weekly email to campus, just alerting them to our webpage with all of our postings that way. Um, that had been a practice that we had done in the past, so we have done that. Uh, again, you'll find on the college's HR website with our postings, there's a number of grant-funded positions. We also do have, and this was a point of conversation in a recent town hall that we had, we do have a Dean of Enrollment Retention and Completion posted, that is another new 21st century way of saying Dean of Admissions, plus other things, because we need to pack a little bit more in there. So we are posting, uh, our current Dean of Admissions is retiring after 30-some years with the college. He has some very big shoes to fill, uh, but that's what that role is. Um, you'll see some promotions. There are a number of faculty in particular, let's say, that have been promoted from associate professor to full professor. Those are all done in alignment with the collective bargaining agreement. Um, it's not the same as the tenure process, which you will all see come April of next year. Um, in terms of separations, one to, to point out, um, Jeremy Greenhouse, for close to a decade, was our Dean of Student Financial Services, another way to say a financial aid and some other services. He had a great opportunity at Worcester State. It's hard to begrudge that opportunity. He had been driving over for nearly those 10 years from that Worcester area, so we do wish him well, and we are searching uh, for a, a position in that area. You'll see just a few retirements. I think a number of our employees on campus are waiting to see if the college will provide a, a retirement incentive that we certainly are going to dovetail to budget preparation starting in 2022. So more to come on that, and then you'll see some part-time hires. So again, just wanted to walk through some of those details on the personnel front. And again, happy to go, uh, stop right there for a second and see if there's any questions. Okay, then, two small notes. Um, let me do COVID vaccination, and then I'll, I'll end with strategic planning and consultant work. So um, trustees will have seen, hopefully, an email from me to campus. I included you on that as well, on all things COVID. Again, we have really brought a new level of clarity to the uh, requirement of students to be vaccinated for January. Uh, one of the things that we newly have in hand is detail on a medical and religious accommodation. Uh, so again, we went out earlier than a, a number of our sister institutions on being able to accept the upload of the vax documentation. Now we compare that with that accommodation piece. All this, again, is uh, prior to the registration start, so we really have done well to position ourselves for that. Uh, again, even though the city of Springfield has come down on its indoor mask mandate, it's hard to change things midstream like this, so we're going to keep that mask, mask mandate in place through the end of the semester and revisit and look at, at where we are. But we're not seeing a widespread transmission, certainly through campus uh, with COVID. So again, we, we really continue to, to lean against all the needs that really have shaped our operations uh, because of this pandemic. Uh, I'll leave with this final note about strategic planning. So again, it's wonderful to hear uh, our trustees really look in on the governance piece. Uh, and again, down the road, uh, this month, myself and our Board Chair go in front of the New England Commission on Higher Education NACI to essentially hear from them about our accreditation status. I, I, I'm not sure if they tell us, uh, Mary Kate, that day, if, yes, by their good graces, we are re-accredited. I fully expect that. Uh, that may come electronically after the fact, but they do want to have a chance to talk to the president and the board chair um, about what their visiting team provided to them. So pretty important to keep putting more foot in the front there on that. We'll hear more about them. And they're going to be encouraged to know that the trustees have this appetite to bring in a consultant to look at uh, models of governance, especially mapped against their standards. Um, to strategic planning, again, if we can perhaps bifurcate that, trustees are going to do their work with consultant that way. We know the college will also benefit from a trustee with strategic planning, just like the self-study and accreditation. Again, we know that the college will bear that burden of facilitating a very broad, open process. We'll look to have a consultant help us with that, as I've previously shared. Uh, in particular, I'll look to uh, Dr. Shay Butler as a designee on behalf of administration to be part of that facilitation model. So more to come as we sort of build out the scope of what that consultancy will look like. And certainly for the time being, we're happy to use internal, external to keep uh, the trustees appraised of where we are with that. But again, it's going to be just like the self-study, broadly inclusive. Again, we'll, we'll, we'll work through, and, and by the way, engage with our shared governance bodies on process uh, and what that might look like. Again, it's going to, it's going to map to the self-study and, and honestly, what that rendered, both from the process and the product itself of that document. So happy to take questions otherwise.
Okay. Any old business? Any new business? All right. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Bill Johnson, second.
Okay, Nanette, can you take the roll call?
Yes, Mary Kate Murren.
Yes.
Janey McDonald.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Perry Spocito.
Yes.
And Monique Saldem Riley.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night.